So that we're not running late all evening. Okay, okay. Welcome everyone to the, our board meeting this afternoon. Glad you could join us. Janice, would you like to take just a minute and talk about our certifications?
Oh.
I knew that would make you smile.
It is absolutely, I'm so proud of this entire board, the board, the superintendency, the business administrator, Robert, everybody has cranked in and completed their board certification by December 1, which was the goal the USBA set for us. So we're, I'm just so proud of everybody and so grateful. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks everyone for taking care of that. And so thanks for coming tonight.
So Janice, we got a higher chance of winning at the prize of USBA conference.
Yeah, that's what we're all in it for.
That's what drove me.
And that was it for Robert, exactly.
Free food for Robert, that's all he wants.
We're going to skip through some of the superintendent's things for right now. Because we started a little late, we may come back to them. But let's go with the inter-local agreement with Weaver County, please. Ms. Russell and Commissioner Harvey.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Russell, I'm Weaver County Executive Development Director and I've got Commissioner Harvey with us here tonight. We're going to be presenting to you tonight an inter-local agreement for our Promontory Commerce Center.
And, and board members, we're just, we're looking just for you to look favorably upon this agreement. This is wonderful for Weaver County, especially it's a project that was all Greenbelt. We all know the wonderful amount of tax dollars we get off of the Greenbelt property. So I have a lot of trust and faith in the developers and they're people that do what they say they're going to do, when they say they're going to do it. And that's so refreshing. So we're just looking at, at least consider that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. I'll go over the terms and conditions of the inter-local agreement in a minute, but I wanted to have the developers come forward and talk to you a little bit about the work that they've been doing with Weaver County and how this project has evolved and kind of the heavy ask that Weaver County has put upon the developers. As Commissioner Harvey stated, this is a Greenbelt project, which means it's, it's basically dirt. So we've had to look at, as we're developing out this corridor, putting in some infrastructure that goes above and beyond what we would normally ask of a developer because they will be catalytic in this corridor. So I'm going to invite Dallin and Daniel Stevens to come forward.
Thank you Stephanie, and thank you for having us here tonight. We're privileged to be here with you guys. This is a project that we've been working on for about 18 months, two years now. And like Stephanie said, as we first got started in the area, that one of the first things we do is do a deep dive into the infrastructure and to try to understand if an area can support the type of development that we're trying to do. And what we found in this area, in Western Weaver County, is there's a severe lack of infrastructure, not only from, on a sewer perspective, but also with the water. There's no water storage in the area that would accommodate the fire department and their storage needs. In addition to a lack on the roads and a lot of other things, there's the power infrastructure, the fiber infrastructure, the natural gas infrastructure, it all needs a lot of upgrades. And so as we did a deep dive with our engineers and working with the county on what they would want to see in order to support a development like ours, a Promontory Commerce Center, we came up with a number north of $100 million just for infrastructure alone that would be needed in order to support this development. It's not, I shouldn't say just to support our development, what we decided with the county early on is that a project like ours could be catalytic to an entire area. So why not take advantage of a project in order to install infrastructure one time that's oversized in its capacity that can service a much broader area? And so that's where that number came from, is the infrastructure that we'll be installing will be substantially bigger than what we need to support just our development, which is why the ask for the tax increment is outside of what you would typically see for a development like this. So Dallin's going to walk us through the numbers. We prepared this one sheet for you that kind of describes it, but it's, to us, we think it's a unique opportunity for a true public-private partnership, where we as a developer can do something that would invest in an area that would be supportive of not only our development, but also the entire surrounding community. As part of this, just to give you a couple of things that we're going to be doing, we're dedicating about 35 acres for a public park. We're going to be putting in a lot of trail systems along the river. We're going to be putting in an oversized water tank of a million gallons. We only need about 250,000 gallons for our development, so it's about four times what we actually need that we'll be installing. We're dedicating some land to the fire department that they'll need in order to build a fire station in the area that would support this whole Western Weaver area. So those are just a few of the things we're doing. And then we have all the backbone infrastructure with a sewer line that's going to be coming all the way from 4100 to 5900 west and a very large lift station that would be, just like I said, service the region. So a couple of the key pieces of infrastructure that we're going to be doing, but I want Dallin to walk you through some of the numbers so you can understand the ask and where the resources would be coming from.
So one question before we move to Dallin.
Please, yes.
Based off of the original that we met when we talked about that and your growth size that you're anticipating on building, is the projected growth that you're going to get in the area still there? Is the market still support what you were looking to build as you phase that in?
Yeah, great question, yes.
Okay.
It is, I failed to mention the park, what we're trying to do out there is a business park that would be manufacturing job, so job growth center for the area. And it's currently contemplated about 4.2 million square feet.
I wanted to add one additional comment before Dallin goes over the numbers with you. The county's worked with Promontory to create what's called a public infrastructure district. And if you're not familiar with that, that is dedicated funding that's going to go towards this public infrastructure. That is a way for the developers to come in, partner with the county and put in large amounts of infrastructure. They carry the bonds, not the county. The developer carries those bonds. But where the county and where the other districts that are participating come in is, is the tax increment finance. And that can be used to pay off those public infrastructure bonds. So the tax increment finance for this project would be dedicated to pay off the PID bonds, which means that your contribution would be going directly to the infrastructure. So I just want to make sure you had an understanding of that.
So, and we also, do you have a trigger date?
Yes.
Because originally we didn't know that trigger date.
Yes. In the inter-local, the trigger date is January 1, 2025.
Okay.
And we'll go over, we'll go over the different portions of the districts we'll be getting as well.
Thank you. And I, we appreciate Dr. Peterson's memo that he put together on behalf of the subcommittee. I think he articulated very well some of the economic benefits that come from this CRA to the school district. And so hopefully I'm not too repetitive from what he's already put together. But just to walk you through some of these numbers and also please stop me at any point, we want to be able to answer your questions as we go through this. But our ask, our request for you to consider tonight is 80% participation for 25 years. And currently, as the land sits today in Greenbelt, over that 25-year period, that land would generate about $300,000 of tax, property tax revenue to the school district. With the participation in the CRA and allowing this development to go forward, that would turn into an additional $15 million of new tax revenue generated for the school district even after participating in the CRA. And we want you to know that that request of 80% for 25 years is not just an arbitrary number. We recognize that that exceeds the board's guidelines, but as Daniel mentioned, because of the large infrastructure need for this area, that was a very calculated request. And the second, excuse me, the second box on this one pager kind of walks through how we arrived at that. You have the total infrastructure costs of about $103 million that are required to allow this project to even happen. We as the developer have agreed to pay for about $82 million of those infrastructure costs. And there's a $20.8 million funding gap that frankly, we can't afford to, to pay for and still have the project be financially feasible. And so that's where we have approached the county and the taxing entities of the county to participate through this CRA and help generate some public infrastructure funds to help close that, that funding gap. The third box shows the total new tax revenue that would be generated by this project and kind of how those dollars flow. So the, in total, this project upon full build-out would generate $126.7 million of new tax revenue. 80% of that would go to the CRA to fund the public infrastructure bond that Stephanie mentioned. The remaining 20% would go to the taxing entities of the county throughout the 25-year life of this CRA. 14.9 of that 25 million would go to the school district. So we, we feel that there is great economic benefit to all the taxing entities of the county, the school district included, by participating in this CRA and allowing this development to go forward. After the CRA expires, there would be $3.2 million of annual property tax revenue from this project alone. And that would be after the 25-year period is over. So I know I went.
To the school.
Yes, to the school district alone. Yes.
During the process, correct me if I'm wrong, you stay, what's the green, what are we getting right now?
You're getting about $12,000 a year.
So even during the process, we still will not get any less than the $12,000, right?
Correct. You'll actually, you'll actually get around $560,000 a year, if I remember right, from Dr. Peterson's memo, about $560,000 a year, even during the process participating in this CRA.
It's about 50 times more than what we're getting right now. And the chance of having something like that, because it's, it's so far west and it's just dirt, as Stephanie said, the chances of that developing into anything without something like this is slim to none. And so it's a win for the district.
I want to add a little more sweetener to this pie. So because we're taking this as a catalytic project, the county has recently been reviewing their CRA policy and, and we have, we're dropping our CRA policy, our general policy down to match yours and the fire districts, looking at the 50% for 15 to 20 years for the county. Because we're asking so much for this initial piece, any subsequent developments that come in into this area, and we're looking at a development area that has over 6,000 acres of commercial development property that's available for development. So you're getting 50 times on this piece at this high rate. Imagine what you're going to get when we start developing out now that we have water and sewer amenities out there. Imagine what the school district's going to garner when we start developing out this additional 6,000 acres. And the development is coming. And we're putting, we're putting the infrastructure in place so that we can accommodate the development. And that development is predominantly commercial manufacturing. So it doesn't have a serious impact on, on your school district, other than you'll be reaping a significant amount of tax increment from those future developments after this particular initial development is put into place.
Just Stephanie, when you mentioned that, you're mentioning there's a chance there'll be an influx in our schools, but it's not going to be a major overrun on the end.
No, but that whole area, if you look at our general Western Weaver plan, is predominantly M3, once you get, once you get past a certain area. There's, there's a small slice of residential in there, but the majority of the development that will happen in that area on that 6,000 acres is industrial and manufacturing.
Just to familiarize all of you again too with that west there, most of that M3 is north of the track, north of that main line UP. All of the residential, we're seeing change and growth and excitement, is south of the track that you have your schools being built already there. So that's where we see the growth is, south of the tracks.
Commissioner Forrester came in a year or so ago and talked about a company that was looking for out west there. Did that fall through?
That particular company made a decision to go somewhere else.
To Boise, wasn't it?
They actually didn't go to Boise, they decided to hold off on their development in the United States completely. So we would have had the same issue out there that we're having right now, is that there was, there is no water and sewer.
This is, so that's why we've done the investments, because of substantial upsizing in this first piece. It works out good, addresses the little Weaver out that area. It's, it's just, it's the right thing to do with where we're headed.
So Cromelots and the Air Force plant and those folks are all on, on just their own civic systems.
Cromelots is out, is out in the.
I mean not Cromelots, the Western.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I, I do some consultation for Little Mountain Service Area. They have a very small lagoon system and it's in very poor shape. We're in the process, they're in the process of rehabbing that, but we need a long-term solution and that is not it. So this, this opens the gate for a long-term solution.
I just wanted to say that we appreciate you bringing this back. I know you had other options. And we appreciate you bringing this home.
Thank you.
And so we appreciate that this taking place.
Well, I appreciate, we appreciate you letting us present to you tonight. So we will be presenting it in our local agreement and I'll just go over the terms and conditions of that and then I'll reiterate that in the, in the, in the meeting. It's 80% for 25 years. The trigger date would be January 1, 2025. We are putting a cap on this. So the maximum would be $85 million. Once the CRA meets that, it could be earlier than 25 years, then you would immediately kick into the 100%. So once we hit that cap, you go back to 100%. So we did put that into our inter-local agreement. So we're really excited about this opportunity. Do you have any questions about the inter-local?
My question was, I was just asking my colleague, tell me about Black Pine. What is it? He says you're a local group.
Oh, absolutely. I'm going to let them sing their own praises, but we, and I will say this before they, before they give you a little description. The county has been working with Black Pine for almost two years. And, and if you ask any of our planners or any of our commissioners, any of our staff, they have been one of the easiest groups to work with that we've had in, in a long time. I just need to say that personally, that's my own personal opinion, but we hear from staff quite frequently. But I'll let them give you a little background on what they do and who they are.
Thank you.
Just have them introduce themselves and so we have a background.
Yeah, happy to do that. Thank you Stephanie for that kind endorsement. I grew up in Weaver County. Daniel Stevens is my name. I was Fremont High grad, so thank you for educating me. And I went away for some time to a different state. I got an education in commercial real estate with a big firm outside of the state of Utah and came back to the state of Utah about, I guess it's been six or seven years now. We launched Black Pine just only two years ago as a firm, but we came with partners that had a lot of experience in these types of projects. And then we brought, in this project that's with us is the gardener company. Ben C. Strang here is a representative of the gardener company there, a partner of ours in this project and a partner of ours in multiple projects that we do. But yeah, we're, we're local. We office in far west and we're in Weaver County and plan to stay here for a long time.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, I can introduce myself as well. I'm Dallin Curridin. I am one of the team members at Black Pine. I've spent a lot of time working on this Promontory Commerce Center project. I was, I did not grow up here in Utah, I'm from North Carolina originally and was working in South Carolina, but knew Daniel from some of his, some of the training that he gave to me while I was a student at BYU. And so when he started Black Pine and got some of these projects going, called me up and I joined about two years ago as Black Pine was just getting off the ground.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Any other questions from up front? Wonderful, thank you. We'll, we'll listen to you again in a little bit. Larry Hadley, Mr. Hadley, you just slipped in, we'll put you on the podium.
Superintendent Butters, President Weston of the Board, I'd like, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have Jeff Hells kind of come up with me and Brian Anderson.
Please.
They've kind of worked with us on this deal. In case I forget a question, they might have the answer for me. So if Jeff and Brian could help me, that would be great. As you know, we've got three new builds going on and we're starting our fourth one with Roosevelt, but these three new builds actually used 90 acres of property that Weaver School District owned, from the high school to junior high and the elementary. So we've used 90 acres of property with these three builds. In our capital improvement committee meetings, we kind of talked about, maybe it's time to look at some purchases of land to replace that for future generations. And Jeff and I have looked at several different properties. We looked, we spoke to secondary and elementary and looking at a couple of focuses. Two areas we thought would be the Harrisville area and also the Hooper area. Harrisville, there was real no piece of ground besides the golf course that contained a high school. High school's about 50 acres, a junior high's about 25, and we like 15 for an elementary, although some of our elementary sit on smaller plots. So we heard about a piece of ground in Hooper and we went and looked at that. And Brian and I met with one family, Rick and Sharon Miles, and we met with them and they were fantastic to meet with. We met with them several more times. And then we noticed there was about 10 acres just north of Rick and Sharon that is actually owned by, there's four parcels of ground, but it's owned by two different trusts. So we started our communications with them. Together it equals about 50.2 acres of ground with all the parcels together. So in our conversations and talks, everybody we spoke to, Gilbert and Bonnie Cap, Wendy and Kevin Fage, they've been all great, every one of them. Our conversations ended last week with us giving them a proposal to purchase each parcel that they own. So inside this, there are actually be four closings and then there'll be some lease agreements to lease back homes. So the Rick and Sharon Miles property is about 38.3 acres. There's 37.52 acres with, that's farmland. And then there's .51 acres, which we call home number two, that is actually tied to the farm. Closing two would be the 1.23 acres that their home sits on currently. With those two parcels, they have 37 shares of Hooper irrigation water. With those two closings, we made an offer for them of $3,966,628 for, for the closing one. Closing two, for the 1.23 acres and home one, we offered $475,200. We then went to Gilbert and Bonnie Cap and Wendy and Kevin Fage. And Gilbert and Wendy own a parcel of 8.92 acres. It has four water shares. It's broken up into a property of 6.9 acres, one acre and .94 acres. For all of that and their water shares, we offered $607,256. Closing four was Gilbert and Bonnie Cap's own 2.02 acres that had two shares of water. We offered $173,389. Total of all the closings for the 50.2 acres and the water shares, the offer was $5,222,473. We'd like to present that to the board tonight. If this is accepted, Jeff has the contracts written, the family has agreed to these purchase prices and everything that goes inside of them. There is a little demolition we have to do on one of the sites and we're going to present that to the board tonight. We'd like to answer any questions you may have.
So Larry, the question on the demolition, we don't need to do that till we've built, right? I mean, so when you mentioned lease back.
We'll lease back the homes.
We'll lease back to them till we're ready to do it. We did similar to what we're doing at West Hill.
Very close. There are a couple of old dilapidated barns that we think risk management would want us to take down. We don't want the public to have access to that.
Where's Rod? Your crew can go out and take that down, can't they?
Yeah, by the end of the week or something.
Yeah, any, any other questions?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. We'll present that to the board tonight.
Thanks Larry, appreciate it. That'll be, you know, we've been, really benefited from the school district having previously purchased property for future events and I think that'll be a great benefit for us in the future. Ms. Heidi Alder, please.
You be board. We don't have a lot of policies to talk about tonight, so I'll just go over, we only have one meeting, actually, I know Superintendent Butters is very excited. I have to warn you, January might be a long meeting. We have a second reading for policy 8800. There was one amendment that was brought to our attention from our curriculum director, Heather Nelson. In, on page five of that policy where it talks about selection of instructional material, our practice has been to issue RFPs when we adopt new textbooks and instructional materials for the district. But there are curriculum materials, instructional materials that are approved by the State Board of Education and included in their instructional materials system, RIMS. And the state has already gone through an RFP process to adopt and include those on their system. And so we just added the provision that if we are using instructional material that is approved and on the RIMS system, then we don't have to go through an RFP process. So that's the only adjustment to that policy since the first reading. Are there any questions about that?
My only question, Heather, is under, at the end, when we talk about selection of learning materials for concurrent AP, and the only thing that says we'll comply with the college board, do we need to add provision that it complies with whatever the concurrent enrollment class?
Yes, yes, that was. Thank you for that, where Member Larson, we need to include what that exactly is. So we'll do that and send it back to you. If you want to pause on that and adopt it on second reading in January, we can do that or we can, for tonight, it's up to you, and then we can add just the requirements for compliance with college board AP.
I, I think that's fine because I, it's pretty straightforward. It just needs to state that concurrent enrollment courses select their own curriculum. I mean, we don't really.
Bring up the change when we're going to vote on it and we'll just put that in.
Yep, and we'll make sure and get that adjustment. Thank you. The, we had another policy that we had presented on first reading last month. And after presenting it on first reading, it was our groups and our clubs policy, we realized that there was some work we still had to do in adjusting and aligning the policy with the state law. I apologize, it probably wasn't, it wasn't ready to be presented on first reading. I should have caught that and I didn't. And so we've made some adjustments, it's not quite ready, but it will be ready to do on second reading in January. And we'll meet with our policy committee next week and go over all of the adjustments. Most of it is formatting and organizational as opposed to substantive. It won't change a lot of the substantive practices, but just to make sure that we are consistent with what is in state law and that it looks the same as it was. It was hard to find where the provisions that are in state law are in our policy. So we just wanted to adjust that. We do have two, two policies that we're bringing to the board tonight. One of them is policy 5200, which is our student discipline policy. And it is a policy we've had for a long time. We last made substantive amendments to it in 2019. We last made substantive amendments to it in 2019, and we actually are in the process with Student Services of developing a more comprehensive overview of this policy to include some code of conduct language and some tools for our administrators to ensure consistency in discipline across the district and to focus on restorative practices as opposed to punitive measures. But that, that's coming. Right now, though, we did want to make a couple of adjustments to align with our current practice and to ensure that our definitions that we have in the policy are accurate. So the first adjustment is on the, on page, these aren't numbered, I apologize, but it's in the definitions section, letter K. Risk assessment is the term that we've defined. Previously, the risk assessments were done exclusively by the district supervisor of mental health services, but over the last year, we've been working with C-stag, which is a risk assessment organization, to train our administrators and mental health counselors at the schools to do risk assessments. And so we wanted to clarify that a risk assessment means an evaluation by qualified individuals who have been trained, not just by our district supervisor of mental health. So that's the first change. The second change we made to 5200 is about when a student is referred to the district for, what's the term, the safe schools hearing. We hold hearings at the district with our Student Services Department when a student has engaged in certain conduct that creates a danger or a risk for other students. Previously, the language, and again, I apologize that these old policies don't have page numbers, but I'm looking under roman numeral four, letter G. You can just flip through until you see colored changes, you'll find that next one. The current policy uses mandatory language, that administrators shall recommend students for a hearing for certain conduct. We're finding that a lot of administrators are working with students on a case-by-case basis and trying to help them, especially if they have own responsibility and they're not a threat, then trying to work with them on a school level as opposed to elevating it to the district and suspending the student long-term is a better approach. And so we just made that discretionary. Administrators may refer certain conduct to the district for a hearing. And then we clarified a couple of things within that list. We also want to clarify that any referral that is made to the district for a hearing ought to be done so only after thorough investigation, because sometimes Student Services will pull the hearing and the administrator, in their haste to address the problem, comes to the hearing without having all of the information necessary in order to make a solid decision. So that was the additional change. And then finally, if you flip over a couple pages later under roman numeral seven, where it says investigations, we just want to make sure that administrators are documenting their investigations in our student information system. It had said my student, we changed it from my student to student information system. And then also acknowledge, stating in here, something that is, happens as a matter of practice, that administrators will consult with Student Services if there is an incident that may require a referral to the district for a hearing. Those are the changes that were made to 5200. And like I said, that will likely be brought, the policy itself will be brought back to the board, but not until likely the end of the school year, as we look at making some bigger changes. The last policy is policy 4400, and this is a lot more straightforward, because it is pretty much a reiteration of federal law. This policy is about student records. We have had a policy about student records in the past as an amendment to that policy, but the previous policy was a very scant, very skeletal restatement of what makes a student record, without a lot of the provisions of when and how we share student records. Student records are protected, they're private, we only disclose them with parent consent, but there are a number of exceptions written to federal law that we have articulated in this policy. It also addresses what we provide to another school when a student transfers from one school to the next, and what makes up a cumulative file versus all other education records. So those are the primary provisions in this, in this law, and it is really a reiteration of federal law. Are there any questions on any of those policies?
Yes.
Well, you presenting the second two on a first reading and the first one on a second reading, welcome to tonight, thank you.
Let's move on to some staffing updates, Mr. Brock Mitchell, please.
All right, good evening, board. I was asked just to provide some updates on our two new schools and the staffing progress we've made. Just as a reminder, with the shift of the boundaries and the students who we moved, that impacts the staffing of those schools. And so we know there's going to be some impacted teachers, and so when I, when I mention impacted schools, it's those schools who are likely to lose staff. For Westfield High School, so far, they have hired eight teachers as department heads. We started with the department heads, and we'll fill out the departments from there. So eight hired department heads, three head coaches are hired. For Mountain View Junior High, they have also hired eight department heads so far, and that's pretty much the full department head range. We've got round one, which are just our impacted schools, those positions will be open next week, and will be interviewed after our break. Round two, which opens up to the entire district, any employee in the district, those will open early to mid-January and interview either late January, early February. And then the third round is for teaching positions for out-of-district applicants. We want to make sure we take care of our in-district teachers first that may be displaced, and those will be opened mid to late February and interviewed and hired early March, most likely. But we will move all of our teachers that are impacted at the schools that have to have teachers moved before our out-of-district positions are filled. So that's where we're at for our new schools.
Brock, how many employees does it take to run a high school?
High school Fremont side, you're looking at about 150, where we're figuring Westfield and Fremont will end up probably close to about 100 and 115, somewhere in there.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Brock, everyone's dying to know who the football coach is at Fremont.
Ah, so am I.
Whoa, 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 you're not helping this.
Good answer, good answer.
I'm not so, I'm gonna push this.
I'm not so sure you heard that. You told me we were gonna get two good coaches, so we didn't have to worry about this UHSSA.
Are you gonna apply?
Yeah. Oh, thank you, Brock.
Shoot, mercy.
That's a perfect answer.
Naming of the new elementary and staffing, Mary Jo Williams, please.
So President Wilson, Superintendent Butters, board, I was asked to give just a few updates on elementary in regards to Roosevelt and to the new elementary. So we have just finalized that the different locations that we will be moving Roosevelt, Roosevelt Elementary to for the 24-25 school year. You can see that we have kindergarten who will be at Washington Terrace, first grade is going to be placed at H-Guy Child, second grade will also be at Washington Terrace, third grade Birch Creek, fourth grade H-Guy, fifth grade is at Uwinta, and sixth grade is at Birch Creek. There was some thought that went into this, we tried to separate when possible that we were sending an upper grade and a lower grade, as sometimes for your recesses and lunch, we try to go back and forth with those different grades. Also, with second grade going to Washington Terrace, they're already in three portables at Roosevelt, and Facilities is going to move those three portables to Washington Terrace, and second grade will stay in those same portables, so that minimized some of the moving that had to happen with those second grade teachers. I always have problems when I try to run this up here. I just wanted to point out that there is a large amount of collaboration that is happening among the different departments in the district to make this move from Roosevelt to these different schools possible. Each of these departments plays a different role in making that happen, and we just wanted to point out that we appreciate what they do, and especially to those four schools that are hosting Roosevelt Elementary. Do you have any questions about any pieces of this or what it's looking like? We're, we're firming up different pieces of it right now. We do have the locations and the rooms that they're going to be in, we're working on placing some of the additional personnel, which is the administrative assistant, the office aide, the mental health therapist, the nurse, the counselor, title-one coordinator, we're finishing those things up and working on some of the scheduling, but we have decided what schools they're going to and what rooms they'll be in at those schools. Do you have any questions in regards to anything else?
I was still trying to absorb what Brock said, so I apologize. Did you...
Mary Jo, can I ask one question?
Do you have a date when that move is?
We know that we have to have everything and everybody out of Roosevelt by June 1st.
Okay, so the West still goes, Larry, that works, thank you.
Yes, Jen.
I know they have a, what I understand, is a fairly robust and maybe ongoing after-school program, but I, I heard recently, and this is by the grapevine, that TH Bell is willing to host that, is that correct?
I think that's one of those things that is up for discussion, and it has been asked if we could possibly do that at TH Bell.
Okay, just, I think that's gonna be important to parents to know what can happen with that.
Right now, I know we have the Boys and Girls Club that is at Roosevelt.
Right, that's a guess what I'm asking for.
Washington Terrace has YMCA after school, and I think Birch Creek also has Boys and Girls Club, so we're trying to work out with TH Bell if we could possibly host Roosevelt at their school for the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you. So in regards to the new elementary, this is just a brief timeline of some of the things that are happening. In our January 3rd board meeting, we will name the administrator for the new elementary. That night, we will also ask for approval to begin the naming process. Part of that process is the administrator putting together an interim community council and PTA, and they will be part of that group that helps us decide along with the parents and the students, the name and the mascot for the new elementary. In January 8th, we are going to start our staffing with opening some of those key school positions, which would be your custodian, your unit manager, the administrative assistant, the instructional coach. Some of those positions will start on January 8th. Then on February 5th, we will begin our first round of open teaching positions, and those will be from all the impacted schools. And once round one is done, we will go to round two, which would be our displaced teachers, early contracts, then we open up outside of the district. But just lay down as far as round one, round two, round three, any questions about that, that timeline? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, transfer of UHSA students, Mr. Matt Williams.
Could you leave up the pretty PowerPoint? Brock and I didn't have a pretty PowerPoint. Superintendent and board, just wanted to update you and clarify you on the transfer UHSA athletic eligibility in conjunction with the creation of the new school. Through multiple discussions with UHSA, it was necessary to, to update it and make some changes based on the, an understanding of it would only affect two schools was part of the UHSA's understanding, being Fremont and Westfield. So I believe you have this in front of you, so if you follow through with me, about halfway through where the bulleted items are, let's just read through this, so that it's pretty Any current 10th or 11th grader attending Fremont High School who is now assigned to Westfield High School Boundary may transfer their athletic eligibility to Westfield, or stay at Fremont without penalty, okay? Fremont students will be athletically eligible with no restrictions at their new boundary school, which is Westfield, even if they have established first entry at their current school. First entry is a UHSA term. Questions? First, the question is, may my student who is currently enrolled at Fremont apply this one-time transfer policy to any high school in the district, Weber, Roy, Bonneville? And the answer is no, students currently enrolled at Fremont may only apply this one-time transfer policy to Westfield. The second one, any current 10th grader or 11th grader attending Roy High School who is now assigned to Westfield, the Westfield High School Boundary may transfer their UHSA, HSA athletic eligibility to Westfield, or stay at Roy without penalty. And likewise, the same, they, they have that choice to go to Westfield or stay at Roy. So if you go to the next page, the question, same is, may my student who is currently enrolled at Roy apply this one-time transfer policy to any high school? No, they can't. They, they get to choose Westfield or, or stay at their student, at their current school. And likewise with Weber, so the small portion of Weber that has the new boundary of Fremont may transfer their UHSA athletic eligibility to Fremont, or stay at Weber without any penalty. And likewise, the same thing applies there, that no, may my student who is currently enrolled at Weber apply this one-time transfer policy to any high school? No, they, they get a choice of to stay where they're at, or, or to go to their new boundary school, which would be Fremont in that section. So it, it basically limits only the people, the families, the athletes affected by the boundary, changing of the new schools to new, they're possibly the schools, they're the only ones with a choice. So, questions about that?
Yeah, and one quick thing can I add? I'm sorry, President, we, we put the two memos in front of you. One will go to all parents of students of high schoolers, and one will go to all of the staff of the, of the five high schools, because of, just to try to clarify and make sure we clear up some of the confusion and rumors that are out there. So just know that these will be sent out probably tomorrow.
Okay.
My question was, so like, the last one we talked about was Weber to Fremont, so are only the students who their boundaries changed be able to? So, because before, I was under the understanding that anybody at Weber could apply for a boundary exception, so it's only students whose boundaries have been affected?
That's correct. So what you stated is correct, the only the students whose boundaries have been affected by the change will be able to choose. Our previous, part of the change that was made is we adopted a policy that was between Skyridge and Lehigh, that was given to us from the UHSA, which allowed for that transfer back. And part of the discussion with UHSA said, we didn't realize it was gonna be four schools, we assumed that it was two, even though they were stated on there, so.
And so then that goes for our ninth graders too? So it's only the ninth graders, if your boundary has been changed? So if they're gonna be a ninth grader next year, they need to basically commit to where they're going to high school?
Ninth graders is a different beast, because of first entry at UHSA, ninth graders can choose any school to participate in the whole state. So first entry, if I had a son that was a ninth grader that wanted to go to East High, he could go there and participate on first entry.
Kelly, but the boundary application would still need to be approved.
So a ninth grader, we still have to have a boundary request accepted as a ninth grader?
Correct.
Before they can apply or try out for sports?
Yes.
Okay, and they have to commit to that, right? So then if, if in 10th grade, they're like, no, I don't want to go to that school, their first, and they've gotta take that year off because their first entry was already made?
That's correct. If they've started their athletic eligibility at school, that's where it is.
So that helps clarify my question to Brock then, in a sense that now we've gone to the section that's going to be, and I'm talking Fremont to Westfield, only the proposed area of change are they eligible to go? The initial thought was, everybody's gonna go to the new one because it's new, then Fremont has nothing to go against, so who's our coach? Well, we'll hurry up and wait, then it might be one we don't know, because no one's gonna play. That's, that helps me clarify. Now, go outside that again, can they still, because enrollment's low, get a boundary exception, even if they're outside of Westfield's, to go to the new school?
Yes.
Not to play, but to attend school?
Yes, they could get a boundary exception to attend school there. If they wanted to play, it would go through the UHSA, their transfer policy.
That makes sense, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt. Yeah, go ahead.
Really quickly, this was gonna be part of my superintendent update, but we're running out of time. We want to formally acknowledge the national award winner in the room, Dr. Bellnapp. And just to let you know, Board, you're already aware that he was named National ACTE Administrator of the Year. That is a big deal. We are gonna formally celebrate that in January's board meeting with a bigger presentation and celebration. But we just want to tell Brock publicly how proud we are of him.
Well, we'll, we'll take about 90 seconds break and get back in here and get started at six o'clock on our regular schedule, Board, may I?